I now call this Cranston City Council meeting to order. At this time, I would ask everybody to turn off their cellphones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
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 Yes. Will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public acknowledgements and commendations. A proclamation honoring Detective Paula Duffy, Sergeant Thomas Okolovich, and Officer Stephen Lang. Councilman Sam Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Just a brief rundown. Back in June, there was a really bad fire early on 11 o'clock in the morning on Florida Avenue. Luckily, three of our guests here happened to be driving by and performed some heroic deeds. If I could, Council President, I'd like to read the proclamation.
Yes, and will the three officers please come forward?
Whereas on June 10th, 2015, at approximately 11:04 a.m., Detective Paula Duffy was on duty traveling on Haven Avenue when she noticed smoke and flames coming from the top floor of 18 Florida Avenue. And whereas, she immediately notified dispatch of her observations and proceeded to this three-story apartment house and quickly gained entry into the first-floor apartment where she escorted a family with a baby and a small dog to safety. Whereas Detective Duffy returned to the building and led another gentleman and his dog to safety. Then suspecting there might be other residents on the third floor, Detective Duffy, with the assistance of Thomas Okolevich and Officer Stephen Lang, went up to the third-floor apartment and quickly broke down the door to gain entry and were immediately engulfed by thick black smoke. And whereas Sergeant Okolevich dropped to the floor in an attempt to search the apartment for additional occupants, but he, as well as Detective Duffy and Officer Lang, were driven back by the intense heat and smoke and the imminent failing of the building's roof and ceiling. And whereas, before being overcome by heavy smoke, they were all able to safely exit the building and the Cranston Fire Department arrived shortly after and began fighting the blaze. Whereas Detective Duffy, after recovering from the smoke, returned to action and assisted one of the dogs who had been affected heavily by smoke inhalation with supplemental oxygen, while Sergeant Okolevich continued to manage the evolving scene, directing responding officers to evacuate the surrounding homes. Now therefore, let it be known to all present that the actions and bravery of Detective Paula Duffy, Sergeant Thomas Okolevich, and Officer Stephen Lang went above and beyond the call of duty. Their selfless decision to enter the home ultimately saved the lives of the occupants and demonstrated an unwavering commitment to public safety. In addition to her actions on Florida Avenue, Detective Duffy coordinated charitable donations from local businesses and Cranston citizens to assist the 14 people that were affected by this tragic event, further demonstrating that her commitment does not end when the final report is written. This Cranston City Council does hereby honor and recognize these brave and heroic members of the Cranston Police Department, whose quick and selfless actions prevented the loss of any lives in this incident. And it's signed by every member of the council.
Well, I think the facts speak for itself. There was truly heroic actions by these three officers. I'm proud of not only what they did that particular day, but also the follow-up to go out and garner contributions to get those families back on their feet. I was notified today that Detective Paula Duffy would be recognized in Rhode Island Monthly Magazine as a result of her actions and going above and beyond the call of duty. So again, congratulations and thank you to the council for recognizing these great officers.
Okay. Public hearings. On the sign-up sheet, the first person is Cindy Fogarty.
Cindy Fogarty, 60, Ausdale Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I wish to address your Agenda Item 7-15-03. This is a recommendation to modify an existing three-way stop sign at Ausdale, Knollwood, and Cruthers Street to increase that to a five-way stop sign where the streets converge. I am opposed to this modification. I've lived at this intersection for 28 years. I've raised two children in that neighborhood without fencing in the yard. They have played outside with neighbor children. They have biked, they have run, they've played ball throughout that area. We have had no incidents of any children being harmed in that area in that time period, no incidents of pedestrians' accidents. And in fact, I can only recall two minor fender benders at that intersection with the existing three stop signs that are there. We're told by the administration that stop signs aren't just to prevent accidents, that there are some other reasons when they're analyzing where to put stop signs. And there certainly is a great deal of information out there. So I went to the Federal Highway Administration site, and both most states and the federal highways do indeed have very specific regulations as to when they're putting in stop signs. And they recommend where you have a combination of high-speed, restricted view, and serious accident records would indicate the need for a stop sign control device. Until I received this letter from Councilman Arquette, where a neighbor a few blocks away from my house, I guess, indicated that he found an obstruction during the wintertime based on the piles of snow that were placed on that corner. Okay, I have to agree with him on that, but the city does that. The city takes all of the snow from the streets and piles it onto my corner. And so, as I do live on a corner, when I shovel, we shovel to one part and we have to dig out to the street. We can't get through the mound of snow that is piled on the corner, and so we start another path and pile and snow shovel the other side of the street. So perhaps if the city would stop piling the snow on that corner, we could eliminate any obstruction issues. As I had said earlier, there were no records of serious accidents there, and the Federal Highway Administration uses a basis for acquiring a stop sign of five or more correctable accidents within a 12-month period. I'm talking 28 years without any serious accidents at that site. So we don't meet that standard. There is an issue where I do see cars, they do, I can hear them accelerate as they're driving through the neighborhood. They're accelerating to and through the stop sign that's already there, the stop sign on Knollwood Avenue going south and north. There are stop signs on both sides of Knollwood. They're not accelerating Ausdale, which goes east to west, west to east. So in addition, I have 24 signatures, which I will submit to the clerk for your review of people that actually live in the immediate area who are opposed to the stop sign and would prefer either at least some lesser method or that some additional research be done on this issue, or enforcement of the existing stop signs on that location be a priority as opposed to just randomly putting up another sign. It doesn't tend to work. Most studies from -- thank you. That have been done, there are many studies, and in fact, a professor and engineer, Reed Ewing, who actually has written the book on this subject entitled "The Institute of Traffic Engineers: Traffic Calming," that the industry no longer recommends using stop signs as a traffic calming measure, as there's a tendency for drivers to actually speed up in between stop signs because they've been delayed at stop signs. So there's a lot of information out there that they do not work as a calming device. And I would ask you to either further study this particular site or please vote down the passage of these particular stop signs on Ausdale. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fred White.
Mr. President and honorable council members, I thank you for the opportunity to come before this group and express my concern about the stop sign that's proposed for Ausdale Road at the intersection of Knollwood and Cruthers. Incidentally, did I give you my name? It's Frederick White, 59 Ausdale. I take exception with Mr. Mulcahy's report that deems the intersection dangerous. And I will elaborate on that, and I'll be brief because I know you've got quite a lot on the agenda tonight. After I found that there was an issue about putting stop signs there, I contacted Mr. Mulcahy and asked him if I could take a look at the crash data or the accident data for that intersection. And he advised me that he didn't have any, that he'd made the decision without that, which is, to me, a vital piece of an intelligent decision on traffic control signs. But I said, "Well, what did you base it on?" He said he based it on other issues, other factors, and he mentioned one was the geometric configuration of the intersection at Knollwood and Ausdale and Cruthers. And the other one that he mentioned was the visibility at the intersection. And he said there were others, but he didn't elaborate on that. It's hard to understand why a decision could be made without the most important ingredient, and that is crash statistics, accident statistics. I found from the police, the Cranston Police Department, that in the previous five years, there have been two crashes in that area. Their statistics do not isolate the incidence to being in that intersection, but in the general area. So they could have occurred on Cruthers, on Ausdale, or on Knollwood, but in the general vicinity, there were two, one in 2010 and another in 2011. Surely, that is not the criteria to determine a dangerous intersection. And then if you take Mr. Mulcahy's two items that he mentioned to me about the configuration of the intersection, the geometric configuration, as well as the visibility in it, both of those work the exact opposite. What he's saying, they're dangerous, they contribute to making a dangerous intersection. My argument is, no, they don't. They make it a much safer intersection. There are, right now, currently, three stop signs there, two on Knollwood and one on Cruthers. So my argument is this. If the intersection is going to be declared dangerous by the traffic engineer, then he must introduce credible evidence, and that has to be in forms of crash and accidents. Incidentally, there were no pedestrian accidents at that intersection. I say that Mr. Mulcahy ruled subjectively, making his decision arbitrary and capricious and not credible. So to act on it would be not quite responsible, in my opinion. And that's what I have to say. So again, I thank you for allowing me to speak. If you have any questions, I'd be more than delighted to answer them if I can, but I know you've got a heavy agenda here, so I'm done. And thank you again.
Our next speaker will be Steve Agnoli.
My name's Steve Agnoli, 127 Kingwood Avenue in Cranston. I would like to talk about the no-confidence vote on Mayor Fung, if I could. I have been living in Cranston my whole life, and Mayor Fung is one of the best mayors Cranston has ever had. Since 2008, when the mayor took office, Cranston has evolved to one of the greatest places to live, work, and play. We should all be thankful and proud of all the hard work he is doing in our great city from economic development, three straight years of no property tax increases, budget surpluses every year, a rainy day fund, over 1,400 new jobs, pension reform to 401Ks, the bond ratings went up, and the great interaction he has with the community. What town or city wouldn't want a leader like that? Any bad weather we have, the mayor is out on the streets giving residents hour-by-hour updates on public safety. Take a step back and look at what the city has become over the last seven years. That's what Mayor Fung is known for. That is our leader, and I am damn proud to call him our mayor of our city. The city council should be proud to have a mayor that loves this city deep in his heart and is trying every day to make it even better for us. It sounds like many of you before me are playing politics rather than doing your jobs that we elected you to do.
Kathleen Odell.
Good evening, everyone. Ditto on Steve. Okay. I think he said it all. I've been a Cranston resident for 16 years, very proud Cranston resident. I'm also a businesswoman. I'm a real estate broker associate. I sell Cranston constantly. I have two closings coming up for Cranston next week. People want to live in Cranston. It's an amazing economic atmosphere. We have all wonderful shops, City View, Garden City. Who doesn't want to live in Cranston? This is the best leader Cranston has ever had, certainly since I've been here. No-confidence vote, really? I don't think so. It's political bias in my heart. I love this man. He's a good man. He's a solid man. I know him personally. Please do the right thing.
Jonathan Keith.
Thank you for letting me speak. Jonathan Keith, 30 Lodge Street. I want to speak on behalf of the no-confidence vote. You guys are the check to that balance. This body votes on everything that mayor does. And if you're going to vote no-confidence in that mayor, you are in fact voting no-confidence in yourselves. I stand in opposition to this, and I would like you to really think hard about what you're voting on.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Mancini. I live at 234 Brighton Woods Drive in Cranston. I'm here to say that I complete faith in Mayor Fung, and I oppose the resolution to oppose him. As a Cranston resident since 1978, I like the direction the city is going in. I left, I went to college, I came back, I decided to get married, I bought a house in a nice neighborhood. I chose to have my family raised here. I have four children thriving, actually excelling in this Cranston public school system. Why? The leadership. We have seen many mayors come and go. We have a good mayor right now. He is out there. I want to restate what he said. He is out there with everyone. He says what he means. He shows up. He is part of this city. This is his blood. He wants to be here. He wants to do a good job. He is doing a good job. I am a homeowner. I have nine multi-unit properties in the city. I want to be here. My huge family wants to be here. My tenants want to be here. I have no problem selling a property for anyone to come in here and stay here. They want to be in this city. We have businesses thriving. I have many family members who own businesses here. They could have left. They could have went to other places in this country, in this world, with multimillion-dollar companies. They stayed in Cranston. This is a great place. Why? It's thriving. Garden City is revitalized. I went to Woolworths as a kid, and now I go to all the different stores here in Cranston, in Garden City. Chapel View, everything is perfect. Everything is coming up. When we had the recession, every other city was failing, Cranston was being revitalized. We are coming up roses with that. Just want to say, I oppose this. He's a good man. He does the right thing. We're trying. He tries. We all are in this together. And I oppose the resolution.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on public hearing? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Carol Myron from 40 Bellevue Drive in Cranston. As I stood here two weeks ago and expressed my extreme disappointment in the actions of our leader and certain people on the police department, I remain very disappointed in the way these things are playing out. The mayor just doesn't seem to get it. And as I stated in the last meeting, I'll state it again, I've known Allen for a long time. He's not the same person that I knew at MetLife. He's dismissing all of you because he stood on Channel 10 and said, he characterized this meeting tonight as nothing but political theater. And I think that's wrong. And I think it further underscores the fact that he doesn't understand or recognize right from wrong. Read the 180-page report. It's time to go.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Carrara, 5 Priscilla Drive. I rise this evening with respect to the political theater statement. I also have a copy of the confidential police report, the confidential report that Superintendent Parry had prepared for Mayor Fung. In December of 2008, he was mayor-elect. And while I won't go through the entire report, what I'd like to do is read the last paragraph. Bear in mind, this report is seven years old. On November 25th, we met with the executive office of the union, Sergeant Steven Anson Tinucci, Sergeant Russell Henry, and Detective Mark Petrella. They voiced numerous complaints about the administration and the manner in which decisions are made in the areas of promotion, disciplining of officers, equipment and facility maintenance, officer morale, and staffing levels in the different units. The union presented to Colonel McGrath the results of a 2007 survey conducted by the union, which indicated the issues of concern, and according to the union, there was no response from Colonel McGrath. It is no secret that there is a serious rift between the union and the administration. It is not clear, however, if the union's opinions of the administration represent the view of a majority of the police office or just a select group. AB 18B. A management review by an outside agency may offer some suggestions towards ameliorating the situation. I think we saw that report a few weeks ago, in our 182-page report prepared by the Rhode Island State Police. For seven years, these issues have not been addressed by the mayor. How come these things never work when you want them to? Political theater, much more than this resolution, is a statement of the disapproval of the council and the Cranston residents they represent regarding the release of the state police report regarding the Cranston Police Department. In short, our city's mayor is incapable of maintaining the charge that he took and ought to uphold. At a minimum, he failed to correct the minor issues in the department that existed prior to his taking office. And further, he exacerbated a manageable situation by surrendering management rights to a political supporter. And the council is being accused of political theater. Ask Officers Padalano, Josephson, Blackmore, Dodd, Gilbo, and others, millions of dollars have been wasted on legal fees and potentially multimillion-dollar lawsuits. Any chief executives that is so reckless with the shareholders' money should be, at the very least, sanctioned. In the case, in this case, he should seriously consider resigning now instead of waiting until his contract with the citizens expire in January 2017. Gentlemen of the council, if this is political theater, you're not going to win a Tony Award.
Anybody else like to speak on any doctored item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Counsel, my name is Peter LaPaula. I'm the director of planning. I'm here tonight because there are two zoning articles relating to floodplain management, and I can ask, I ask to reserve, or I ask that you allow me to do a presentation when those ordinances come up, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have in those ordinances.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on any doctored item?
Richard Tomlin's, 400 Farmington Avenue. Mr. President, other members of the council, a little housekeeping, first of all, to remind that individual who spoke. This council is a legislative body for the city. They have equal power to the mayor. It is the same in the state, and it's the same in our federal government. So they have their job to do regardless of any outside interference or what anybody thinks. Now, on this no-confidence vote, quite frankly, I don't know how it's going to go down. I really don't care, and I'll tell you why. Because it will never do the job. I've heard a rumor that maybe it's a first step, but I would be against that also because this will fade away very quickly. What this council has to do, and what they have the power to do, is to call for a special prosecutor, use their subpoena power, and bring in the individuals that is talked about in this 182 pages. If you read that report, which I think at least a half a dozen people that spoke here tonight did not read it, you will find out that a lot of this stuff has surfaced. We don't go beyond, as Colonel O'Donnell said, it was $900, 900 pages, and they had to bring it down to 182, so it couldn't be all that comprehensive. So what you're charged with, if you're really going to do your job, is to bring the people under subpoena power. Let's find out what those tapes really say. Let's find out what those cellphones have to say about Ticket Gate. There is no question that we are faced here with a minimum of $2 million. Just think of what you could have done with that $2 million if we didn't have Untrustworthy in the highest office in this city, one who is charged by charter for the supervision of the police and the fire department, public safety. You could have used that for roads. How about kindergarten? We're going to experiment with kindergarten. That could have been for kindergarten full-time. If you know anything about this city, the demographics are changing rapidly, and we're not preparing as rapidly. I've talked to teachers, I've talked to administrators, and there's lots of work that we're going to have to do if those young people who are entering our schools, particularly in special areas of the city, are going to go on to become tax-paying and good citizens for this state and for this country. So what I'm saying to you is, I think this is kind of a waste of time, because no matter how it comes out, it's kind of like a slap in the face. The press will run it for a day. Some of you will be interviewed, why you voted one way or another way, and it's gone. By the time the election comes around, it's not only going to be forgotten—if Mayor Fung runs—which I guess he's going to run—he can easily—when Mike Seifi brings it up, he can say, "Well, it was the Democratic Council. They were just playing politics. That's why this is on the agenda." And I don't know what his answer could be to that. You've all read the report. You all know the seriousness of this—and this situation. You have your own barrister, you have your own auditor. Start a thorough review so those people who really have committed crimes against this city can be held accountable. I don't know how many people in this audience realize that Captain Antonucci is going to be kept on from July 1st to April 15th. That's approximately 300 days. I don't know how you make up sick days, vacation days, to get him to full salary before he retires, and then they say he will earn another $40,000. If that isn't ripping off the city, ripping off the taxpayers, and that has nothing to do with $150,000 that has been spent to date—to date on lawyers' fees, and then you're prepared to give him another $40,000. Why don't you buy him a $30,000 watch and save $10,000? What I'm saying is that you have a responsibility to go far beyond what you're doing tonight because it is—it will not do the job. This city demands that we know those who committed what, and that they are held accountable. I beg you to do your job. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on any doctored item? Okay, public hearing section is now closed. Our resolutions. Resolution expressing a complete lack of confidence in Mayor Fung's ability to continue to lead the city of Cranston sponsored by Council President Lanny, Council Vice President Santa Maria, and Councilman Osito. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Will the clerk please read the entire resolution?
We resolve that whereas on November 14th, 2013, members of the Cranston City Council Finance Committee met and voted on a proposed tentative agreement with the International Brotherhood for Police Officers Local 301. At that meeting, the Finance Committee rejected the tentative agreement by a vote of 3. Early on the morning of Friday, November 15th, 2013, members of the Cranston Police Department issued 112 parking tickets, of which 106 were for violations of the overnight parking ordinance. Additionally, during the early morning hours of Saturday, November 16th, 2013, the Cranston Police Department issued another 34 tickets, of which 31 were for violations of overnight parking ordinance. The majority of these tickets were issued in the Arlington and Edgewood sections of the city of Cranston in Wards 1 and 3. And whereas on Sunday, December 1, 2013, City Council Members Steve Steikos and Paul Arquette, who represent Ward 1 and Ward 3 of the city respectively, filed a complaint with the Cranston Police Department's Professional Standards Unit. Both council members had voted against the proposed police union contract on Thursday, November 14th, 2013, because they felt that the contract was excessively lucrative to ranking members of the Cranston Police Department, and that if the contract were passed, it would be financially burdensome to the residents of the city of Cranston. And whereas on January 7th, 2014, Council President Lanny called for a special meeting of the Cranston City Council, which was scheduled for January 9, 2014. As part of the posted agenda, the city council anticipated discussing a resolution requesting that Rhode Island State Police investigate the alleged Cranston ticketing scandal. On January 8th, 2014, Mayor Fung received a preliminary report from then Colonel Palumbo regarding the findings of the internal investigation into the issuance of the parking tickets. January 9th, 2014, a notice of discipline was drafted by Colonel Palumbo in an address to Captain Antonucci advising that the Office of Professional Standards Unit within the Cranston Police Department had determined that there were a total of 128 tickets issued in Ward 1 and Ward 3 in the days following the Finance Committee meeting, in which the tentative contract agreement was voted down. The investigation uncovered compelling evidence to suggest that this aggressive ticketing was directed by Captain Antonucci and coordinated through his subordinate officer. On that same day, January 9th, 2014, Mayor Fung contacted Colonel O'Donnell of the Rhode Island State Police and asked the Rhode Island State Police to assume control of the Cranston internal investigation. Mayor Fung had then placed Colonel Palumbo on paid administrative leave from the department. Mayor Fung further requested that the state police oversee the day-to-day operations of the Cranston Police Department, review several disciplinary issues and allegations of mismanagement within the Cranston Police Department, as well as conduct a thorough assessment of the department. Whereas the assessment of the Cranston Police Department for the period 2014 through 2015 was conducted by the Rhode Island State Police pursuant to a request by Mayor Fung. And whereas in late July 2015, the Rhode Island State Police made publicly a partially redacted version of their assessment of the Cranston Police Report. And whereas the Rhode Island State Police completed a thorough and voluminous report on their assessment of the state of the Cranston Police Department, the report was 182 pages long and contained a series of findings on a number of topics, as well as conclusions and recommendations. And whereas in the assessment by the state police, the state police concluded that most of the department's troubles can be attributed to the poor leadership of the department's top officers, political interference and influence by Mayor Fung and members of his administration. The report also details Mayor Fung's unwillingness to take decisive actions to correct serious problems when they were brought to his attention. Those individuals within the police department who felt targeted believed that they had nowhere to turn for help because they perceived that the police chief, mayor, and president of the department's police union often seemed to be working as a team to quash dissent and reject legitimate grievances and complaints. The assessment concluded, quote, "Mayor Fung was aware of many of the problems within the department, including unwarranted disciplinary actions taken against specific officers, the intimidation of civilians, and attempts by Colonel Palumbo and his top-ranking officers to interfere with the promoting testing process. Yet he took no action and failed to rectify many of the significant issues brought to his attention concerning Colonel Palumbo's erratic behavior." End of quote. The report also concluded that Mayor Fung, the members of his administration interfered and unduly influenced the department's operations when it suited their purpose. It further concludes that Mayor Fung privately sought to substantially reduce the discipline against Captain Antonucci, who had supported Mayor Fung's campaigns for mayor and for Whereas the Cranston City Council reviewed the state police assessment report in its entirety and held a special meeting of the city council to question the mayor concerning the findings of this report and assessment. While the mayor answered questions at that meeting from citizens and the city council, he failed to provide clear, inaccurate reasons and rationale for the decisions he had taken with regard to the police department. And whereas the Cranston City Council is grateful to the efforts of the Rhode Island State Police and Colonel O'Donnell, and it accepts as true the findings of the Rhode Island State Police assessment, that in essence, the Cranston Police Department was grossly mismanaged under the leadership of Mayor Fung. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council specifically and affirmatively expresses that it has no confidence in Mayor Fung to continue to lead the city of Cranston as its mayor. Sponsored by Council President Lanny, Council Vice President Santa Maria, Councilman Osito.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under discussion, Council Vice President Santa Maria, would you step to the—step up here, please?
Council President Lanny, when you're ready to speak.
Okay. As a sponsor of this resolution, I have a few words to say. First of all, I read the 182 report—page report twice. Not once, twice. It's a three-hour read, so I'm assuming most of you in this audience didn't read it. But the questions that it brings up are both moral and ethical questions concerning the leadership in the city of Cranston. Mayor Fung—I've known him as long as he's been in office. I've supported him in the past. However, this report shows me something I never, ever knew about Mayor Fung. He let a department run rampant. He knew what was going on. He did nothing about it. Absolutely nothing. Good men, good women were put on administrative leave. Their jobs were threatened. They were given demotions. They were brought to court. Their families suffered. They suffered for doing absolutely nothing wrong. All because of vendettas created under ex-Kernel Palumbo with the knowledge of Mayor Fung. These are the moral and ethical questions a member of this council have to vote on tonight. Not whether Mayor Fung helped Garden City grow, or Chapel View grow, or cut $10,000 ribbons, but what is the leadership of this city going to be? This is not a good old boy network. This is a very important decision for this city council. Colonel Perry's report—the mayor wouldn't release it to the state police, but he gave it to John DePietro. Remember, this council haven't got it. Somebody in the audience does have it. The mayor is the public safety director of this city. I've said it before and I'll say it again. If that was an appointment by the mayor, a public safety director, that individual would have been fired immediately. However, the mayor can't fire himself. This council, therefore, is going to tell him how we feel about this situation. And that is a vote of no confidence. Thank you. Under discussion, anybody else from the city council? Hearing note? Councilman Osito? Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I think it's important to all the council people here that we forget about what we do in real life and just think about what we were elected for. Forget that we're lawyers. Forget that we work in computers. Forget that we're printers. Forget that we're unemployed or retired. Forget about that. Just think of the taxpayers and the people that you represent. If any of us were involved in one-tenth of some of the items that happened, we wouldn't be in office today. There'd be an outrage. Major outrage. Councilman Farina always says, "Let's move ahead." I think there isn't a member of this council that doesn't want to move ahead. But how can you move ahead? If we recall the series of events of the report and the summary letter coming to light, first, we received a summary letter over the weekend, and come to find out, after asking the administration, you know, there was letters from three attorneys who went to court three days before we got the letter to file a stay so that we wouldn't get that letter. And when we directly asked members of the administration representing the mayor, how did they find out? Nobody knew. Well, I found out because a couple of the complainants called me and told me and apologized to myself and members of the council, saying that they were given phone calls to go ahead and file the injunctions. With regards to Colonel Perry, we've been asking for that. At least three members of this council was asking for it. The state police asked for it. And then he appears on a radio station and goes ahead and tells the host he's going to release the letter. You're right, this is about politics. Politics of interfering as a chief executive officer through his administration in hurting people's civil rights, taping police officers, demoting people, and running ramshот around that whole department. Chasing people out of the city of Cranston with a Cranston police officer working in some other town. And then trying to have him falsify the bill that he was doing something else. Now, if you'd lied like that in a job and you got caught, you wouldn't have a job. All right? Whatever I say is going to be deemed political, but let's get to the bottom of this. We didn't start it. The mayor became political. He ran for governor. For 10 months, he wasn't inside here in the city managing things. He was here for part of the day, and he was campaigning part of the day for something else. All right? And how do we know as council people, if we don't take this further, that interference didn't happen in all the departments? Other people's promotion rights in the civil service system weren't interrupted with? Or do you follow that? We don't know. I agree—I agree with my colleague, Councilman Botts, to the fact that, yes, we got the state police report, but that's just a tip of the iceberg. We want the other documents. We want the tapes. We want the ability to review that. So again, I apologize to taxpayers if this seems political. It's really not political. It's our job as being a councilperson to get the facts, nothing but the facts, and get to the bottom of this. I am voting because I have no confidence, because the administration not only lied to the taxpayers in my ward, but he lied to me, and his administration lied to me in public after the fact. Just before this meeting, we got a letter from Lydia Wilson. I think all members of the council have that letter. Right? And if you read—that's just another example of being dishonest with not only the taxpayers, but with members of this council. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Councilman Steikos, then Councilman Farina.
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to address is the charge that this is political. This is frankly what the mayor trots out. Every time he gets severely criticized, he says, "It's political." If you look in the state police report on page 157, that's what he said about the superintendent of the state police, that he was political in his investigation. So when there's criticism, instead of focusing on the issue, the mayor tries to change the subject and say, "It's political." Everyone else is always political. He's never political. Now, I think this is, as other council members have said, this is a very important and serious thing to do, to consider a no-confidence vote in a man who was elected by the people. But like President Lanny, I also—I voted for Allen Fung on occasion. And I'm just—I'm embarrassed that I did that. I was—I—I'm sorry that I did that. But beyond that, I think we have to—as people have mentioned the state police report. And I went through the state police report again, and I'd like to list the specific reasons that I am voting no confidence in the mayor. Number one, after Allen Fung agreed he would not interfere with the operation of the police department as a condition of the state police taking control, he conducted secret behind-the-scenes meetings with Stephen Antonucci and promised him he'd give him his job back. That's number one. Number two, after the election that he lost for governor, Allen Fung attempted to bring Stephen Antonucci back at full Steven Antonucci back at full rank with only minor penalty. Number three, on two occasions, according to the state police report, Alan Fung, in meetings with Police Chief Mike Winquist, was told by the police chief that if he brought Steven Antonucci back onto the police department, that Chief Winquist would consider resigning. And in response, Alan Fung said, "Well, I understand." So, on two occasions, the mayor was willing to, was more interested in bringing Steven Antonucci back onto the police force after what he had done than he was in having Mike Winquist as his police chief. Number four, after Alan Fung learned that Chief Palumbo had violated the civil rights of a computer contractor by ordering a Cranston police officer to spy on him at his home, and after Alan Fung learned that Chief Palumbo ordered falsification of overtime records to cover it up, and after the computer contractor called Alan Fung personally to say he was being threatened by Chief Palumbo, Alan Fung asked Chief Palumbo to investigate himself. And when he received no report back from Chief Palumbo, he did nothing. Number five, to open a captain's position for then Lieutenant Antonucci, Alan Fung coordinated the quick, forced retirement of Captain Thomas Dodd, who received an expensive disability pension. Number six, after being told by the state police of the unfair demotion of Matthew Josephson engineered by Chief Palumbo and Union President Antonucci, Alan Fung, in the middle of his race for governor, did nothing. The state police said, "This has got an injustice that needs to be corrected." But Alan Fung, in August of 2014, did nothing, and to this date, has done nothing. Seven, at huge taxpayer expense, Alan Fung put Captain Todd Padalano on paid administrative leave with the cooperation of Chief Palumbo and Union President Antonucci for 22 months over bogus charges. The case cost the city $370,000, and now is the subject of a $5 million lawsuit. Alan Fung could have settled that case for $98,000. He chose not to. Yet, he tells us he made every decision based on what was good for the taxpayers. Number eight, a major barrier to a settlement with Captain Padalano was Alan Fung's insistence that he receive all Captain Padalano's tape recordings of conversations with Palumbo and others to avoid embarrassment during his race for governor. Number nine, after he learned Chief Palumbo's, of Chief Palumbo's effort to subvert and manipulate the civil service promotion process in order to deny a promotion to the highest-ranking woman in the Cranston Police Department, Karen Gilbo, at the time Lieutenant Karen Gilbo, after he learned of this attempt to get the scores by Chief Palumbo and manipulate them, he did nothing. Number 10, after learning of the many misdeeds of Chief Palumbo, his hand-picked police chief, Alan Fung failed to discipline Chief Palumbo and instead put him on paid administrative leave long enough for him to retire with an extra year on his pension and a generous severance package. That's why I have no confidence in Mayor Fung. Thank you.
Councilman Farina?
Thank you, Council President. As I read through this several times, and read through the police report several times, there are things in the police report that I find very disappointing. And I can say most of this resolution I agree with, up until we get to about line 96. The issue I have with it is not that I have no confidence in Mayor Fung. And I do have confidence in Mayor Fung, but I have no confidence that he can run the police department. And it goes to show you that politics has no place in the police department. I would like to see this resolution be worded slightly differently and put some teeth in it. Realistically, this is, if we do pass it, this would be our opinion, how we think. And Councilman Acido mentioned I like to do things to move the city forward and be positive. At the end of the day, if there was some language put into this that said, "We have no confidence in Mayor Fung running a police department," and to make my statement more true, I believe there's probably only one person in this room, maybe two or three, who I feel confident run the police department, and that would be Colonel Winquist. If we were to change this and put it to a fact that we urged the mayor to hire a public safety commissioner, we urged the mayor not to be involved with the police department, we urged the mayor to let the Colonel run the police department, I could support that because it'd be a positive aspect of the resolution as opposed to just us throwing up our hands and saying, "We have no confidence in your mayor." That's the fundamental problem I have with this. There's nothing in here that says, "How are we going to solve the problem? What are we going to do to fix it? And how are we going to move Cranston forward?" You know, that's where I am on. I would never want to be, Councilman Acido brought it up very, very clearly, that the way it's worded, and I don't think this is the intent of the sponsors, the way it's worded, it could be construed as a politically motivated piece of legislation. You know, I intend to run for mayor of the city someday, and I would never want anyone to say that I did things that were politically motivated. So, if we could add some language to this that shows how we move forward, how we're positively affecting change in the city, I could support it. But as it stands, just us saying no confidence, I mean, we're going to come back in another month and saying, "He needs to do something different, he needs to hire a public safety director." I mean, let's, let's think long and hard about what we want the mayor to do differently, and let's think about that.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. This council is putting the cart before the horse. I've heard this council would conduct a further investigation beyond the state police assessment, asking for documents, emails, et cetera. As Councilman Acido said, and I think I'm on record as saying that, I want the truth to come out, and I don't think we have all the information. Again, we have 182-page report, and Colonel O'Donnell is on record as saying that it could have been 500 or even 1,000 pages. And whether it works in Mayor Fung's favor or it doesn't, that information does need to come out. Again, if we're referring to tapes, the transcript should be in there. If we're referring to emails, the emails should be in there. If Captain Dodd waived his HIPAA rights to the state police, maybe he'd be willing to do that as well. But that's up to Captain Dodd. Has anyone from the council called the administration and asked, "Hey, can I see these documents relating to whatever section of the report that you have?" Has anyone done that? Has anyone gone in to say, "Can I see the evidence, any evidence you may have?" Maybe they'll say no, but has anyone gone in and asked that? And I would ask the state police to release all the documentation they have once Justice Gibney rules, I guess, on what's before her in the next coming weeks. So, again, yeah, here we are, cart before the horse, but we're calling for a resolution of no confidence. It is my opinion that this is folly, and it's an attempt by the Democratic majority of this council to help their prospective candidate for mayor next year. No criminal actions, no criminal actions were conducted by the mayor, yet there are members of this council advocating the mayor should resign. Now, do I think the mayor made some mistakes or bad decisions that were outlined in this assessment? Yes. Do I think they warrant a vote of no confidence or resignation? No, I do not. It's my belief the notion of a no-confidence vote are for organizations that do not elect their leader or management figure, and one instance would be a union. A mandate of no confidence or confidence in the mayor comes from the voters of Cranston every four years. If the voters are that upset about the mayor's choice in settling with Captain Antonucci or any other aspect of this assessment, they can express that 15 months from now, on Election Day, if the mayor runs for reelection. A couple of points, too. The person that ordered the following of that IT person out of the city of Cranston no longer works for the city. It was not the mayor that ordered that, it was Colonel Palumbo. He's not here anymore. And it is my, I believe, this report that came out today, that two-page report that Colonel, former Colonel Perry did, I believe that refers to a division between the union and the previous administration, because this report was done prior to Mayor Fung coming in office. So, this notion of teams existed long before the mayor took office, and it was outlined in an op-ed in the Provinence Journal last week. So, that being said, I urge my fellow members of the council to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.[1291.47][1291.47][applause]
Councilman Akero?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I just want to clarify something. I believe a speaker, I think it was Mr. Keefe, said that this council votes on everything that the mayor does, and that's erroneous. I'm sure the public's aware that the mayor had secret negotiations and contracted to a secret agreement with Captain Antonucci, that this council had no involvement at all, and they couldn't even ratify the deal in which he gave the gravy train to Captain Antonucci. So, just wanted to clarify that for the record, President Lanny. But let me now speak on the resolution. When I thought about the mayor, I thought of chief executive, I thought about what it is to be a leader. And it's someone you look up to, someone you have pride in, someone you have a great deal of respect for. And in the 10 points that my colleague, Councilman Stychos, made, I see a lack of honesty in our leader. I see a lack of sincerity in our leader. I see a lack of integrity and truthfulness. And if the mayor chooses to stay another year, I'm going to find it very difficult to vote on items that he puts forward, vote on his agenda, because dealing with this administration the past several years, they have not been above board, they have not been truthful to the council. We request documents, we request information, they stonewall, they delay. When Colonel O'Donnell's four-page letter was released, the first thing the administration did was say, "It was a personnel matter, and we can't release it to the council because it's going to jeopardize sensitive litigation." Unfortunately, President Lanny was able to move around that, and we were able to see the four-page letter that Colonel O'Donnell stated. Then the state police report was finished, and it was 182 pages. And again, the administration moved to block information from the public, and they played the personnel card. And they said, "Oh, we can't release this because there's sensitive material in there, and it's not, should not be viewed by the public." And they tried to stifle information for a second time. Fortunately, Colonel O'Donnell had the courage under the Freedom of Information Act, and he was able to release that for all of us to read and find out the truth. Find out the truth of what was going on in our city and in our police department. And when you think about the police, you think about people you can trust and people you feel protected with and people that you believe in. And what I have a difficult time in understanding is when our police department was doing unethical things, and our police department was being used to promote the agenda of the Cranston Police Department, because they wanted this fabulous contract that the mayor negotiated with his best buddy, Steven Antonucci. Now, how can the mayor, in good faith, negotiate a contract with the president of the police union who he has this intimate relationship? That he would not even discipline his captain when his captain went well beyond professional code of ethics and standards, intimidating members of the council, bullying the personnel director in order for her to turn over test, confidential test scores, beyond setting up Sergeant Josephson. So, we have a history of this officer always crossing the line, and our chief public safety director does nothing. Does nothing. What he did was force Dodd out to promote him to captain. So, in lieu of all these, this that I have learned from the report, fortunately, Councilman Stychos put it in a very logical 10-point message, I think it's the ethical thing for this council to do, to send a message to our chief executive and say, "We have no faith in your judgment. You can't make a judgment. There's something that, for some reason, Mr. Antonucci has over Mayor Fung." And until we know what that is, I don't think Mayor Fung can run the city. And I am going to be voted for this vote of no confidence. Thank you.[1589.11][1589.11][applause]
Councilman Peplakis?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I have to agree with Councilman Farina when he said that, made the statement that missteps were done with the police department. Yes, there were some missteps that were taken. But do I have no confidence in the mayor? No, I have confidence in the mayor. You know, I'm a freshman councilman, I have a nine-month window to look at. And when any of my constituents contact me award five, regardless of the issue, when I send it on to the administration that's led by Mayor Fung, it gets taken care of, and things get fixed, and I get an answer right away. So, do I have confidence in the Mayor Fung to lead the city? I do have confidence. Were there missteps in the police department? Do we maybe need a public safety commissioner? I agree with that. But I will not be supporting this. Thank you.[1639.11][1639.11][applause]
Councilman Pavecchio?
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to ask to the sponsors what the purpose of the, what this resolution, the purpose of this resolution. I'm trying to determine whether it's just to, just a simple no-confidence, or you're asking the mayor to resign. I'm just trying to figure out what the purpose is.
One of the sponsors, it's a simple no-confidence. Nobody's asked the mayor to resign.
Okay. Let me, let me address a few things. First of all, it basically just recites everything that's in the police report, and it's almost verbatim. To address the Captain Antonucci matter, I think it's pretty simple. There were three, only three options in this matter. You could either bring him back, which was a bad idea, admittedly, but it would have been the least costly thing for the department to do. You could go all the way with the Leabour proceeding, spend another $100, $150,000 in legal fees, and the most probable result, according to Attorney Rogaosta, who came before us to discuss it, would be that it would be dragged out for a year, maybe two years, and in the meantime, as soon as Captain Antonucci got to his desired retirement age, he would pull the plug and the case disappears, he retires, and we've spent that extra $100, $150,000, plus he's been on the payroll and gets paid whatever vacation and sick he has coming. The notion that, so the middle ground in that whole thing was that, was the deal that was actually struck with the consent of the police chief, and that was to have him retire and settle the matter. The notion that we're going to spend millions on his pension is just a fallacy. That pension was earned in the 19 years or so that he had worked for the department. It was paid for both by the city and himself, and he wouldn't be denied a pension because he didn't quite make 20 years. I think that that's a misconception. He's going to get his pension no matter what. And with, and in looking at all the cases in Rhode Island, unless you commit a felony, no one is going to be denied a pension. That's the state law. The case is- That's the state law, the cases follow that to the letter. And even someone who's actually served time in jail has preserved part of a pension, according to some of the case law in Rhode Island. So, to suggest that we, that there was another option, I don't think there was. Certainly, it would have been nice to go all the way on the Leabour, and you terminate him, and makes, 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 set an example for the rest of the department and for the city. But it was not practical under the laws that we have. And that again relates to the Leabour thing, in which ironically, I have a resolution on later, which I think everyone supports, asking the legislature to make some serious changes in that law, because it really elongates these proceedings and makes them last far too long, costs way too much money for the city in legal fees, and there's really nothing we can do about it. If the purpose of the resolution is just to tarnish the mayor, okay, but aren't we tarnishing the city itself when we do that? In looking at the police department, over the last 20 years, we've had seven chiefs. That should be concerning to us. That's less than three-year average for every chief, and I suspect if you go back 50 years, you're going to find the same kind of thing. Mr. Carrera made mention of that report, which I haven't even seen, but something interesting in it was that the, this notion that the, you know, all these A and B team stuff started in 2009 is really not correct, because there's evidence that it existed prior and probably existed for a long, long time. In fact, every chief that's been selected has been required to be from within the department. So maybe that boiled over with the Antonucci matter, and now we have a police chief from outside the department. I noticed, and to suggest that this is, it's not political, in the Cranston, I read in the Cranston Herald that the Democratic Party caucused on August 24th to determine what its next move would be. So if it wasn't political, then why would you need to discuss it? We're talking about the A and B team, and yet, if we vote no confidence, then aren't we dividing the city and dividing up our team? We're trying to do things together and make things happen. The issues with regard to things that our constituents want, roads, like roads, services, taxes, we need to get back to work and do these things, and we're not doing them. We're distracting our work so that we can continue to talk about these issues. The, I note that Councilman Stikos mentioned the computer, the computer man, the IT man. Didn't, that matter was resolved within a matter of hours. From the, from the narrative that we saw in the police report, the mayor addressed that very quickly and threatened to fire Chief Palumbo if he didn't show up in his office the next morning. With regard to Captain Dodd, you know, Attorney Rogaosta, who was our attorney, as well as another attorney that was consulting with him, made the determination that he should be disabled, that he should go out on a pension. That was, there's evidence of that, there's a direct line of communication. Mr. Cordy was a very disciplined note taker, and I know that there's evidence of the fact that all of that information was provided, and that we weren't misled, because we were advised by the attorneys that were hired, and admittedly, one of them is the leading expert in Rhode Island. And this council brought him before the council to discuss that issue. With regard to Mr. Sergeant Josephson, you know, the administrative issues with regard to the police department are not something that the mayor is involved in every day of the week. And this officer had two attorneys advising him when he made his deal. Whether that was a good deal or not, I don't know, but he did have both, two attorneys representing him. So, we can only go so far with what we can do there. There's a collective bargaining agreement, there's a union that, you know, and I think that the administrators already made steps to try to rectify that situation as best it can be done under the collective bargaining agreement. With regard to Captain Padalano, you know, there's a, there's definitely a gap there that I'm still concerned about, in that there was a report filed by the, from the state police to the Colonel, then Colonel Palumbo, which said that that case may not have had merit. And yet, that information was never communicated to the administration. And so, that gap caused quite a bit of that problem, and it's unfortunate. And I think we need to look at ways in which we can tighten up those regulations so that that information doesn't languish and that it's, that it is provided to the mayor. Now, you know, we're talking about interference. Is it interference, or is it running the department? I think that one criticism I could levy is that I think the mayor should have exercised more control over his police chief and not less. But I don't, I suspect that police chiefs do not want to have the mayor looking over their shoulder all the time. I think it's, you know, we put our police chiefs in a position of trust, we trust their work ethic and their integrity, and we put a lot of faith in them, and I think that's what we're doing now. And I think, you know, it's just unfortunate that Colonel Palumbo didn't live up to the standards I think that most police chiefs have. Now, the city has been, you know, we need to get back to the work, because this city is doing very well, despite what we've been through with the police department. And this police department has maintained its community law enforcement accreditation before, during, and after this police, state police assessment. It's amazing. They've been able to put everything aside and maintain a high standard, and they continue to do so, and they do some great things, as we've seen. So, you know, Councilman Asido, he made, you know, quite a few remarks, but back in, I don't know that you were calling for one of our former mayors to step down when the city's rainy day fund was completely depleted, and the teachers were worried about getting a paycheck back in the early 2000s. I think you may have been on the council at that point. So, I mean...
But that's not political.
Well, it is political, and so is this. Therefore, I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Councilman Vivekio, you seem to know so much than who ordered the Code Red, who ordered the ticket scandal, who ordered that? You're saying that these gaps are five minutes, 10 minutes. Then you also said that the mayor shouldn't interfere or shouldn't be managing the department day to day in one sentence, and in the next sentence, you said, or a couple of sentences later, he needs to go in there and manage, make sure. From day one, the mayor made this political. And let me tell you how he made it political. He went to the union, talked to the union, or his director of administration went to the union, told the union, let's do a vote of no confidence. So if we do that, then the police chief has to resign, because there's a vote of no confidence, and then we could just put in our own A team, or B team, or C team, or whatever you want to put in. So that's how this went down. So to say there wasn't any political interference right from the get-go is absolutely, the record denies that. Okay? So who ordered the Code Red, then, since you seem to know so much about that? Who ordered the ticket?
I don't know. The state police didn't tell us.
Oh, you don't know that, but you know the other stuff.
Well, am I supposed to do what the state police did? That was their job.
Who ordered the Code Red?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, this is not a debate. You made your points, it's not a debate. Anybody else like to speak? Councilman Arquero.
Thank you. Through the chair, Councilman Vivekio. Mike, you gave three options of what the mayor could do with the Captain Antonucci matter. Were you aware that Captain Antonucci was a probationary captain?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure.
Probationary means you stay out of trouble for one year. As a police officer, when you get promoted, you stay out of trouble for one year, and you keep the rank. Evidently, in my opinion, Captain Antonucci violated that probation with ticket gate and other instances. We found out about Subella, we found out about Josephson, and I'm well aware that the mayor was aware of what was going on with his personnel director. So in lieu of these shortcomings, shortcomings by the captain, the mayor had the option to demote him lieutenant, because he didn't, was not, did not achieve full rank of captain.
May I respond, Council President?
Yes.
Well, Councilman Arquero, I'm talking about once it got into the Leabour process, there was no op, you could not do that. You could not demote him once he filed the Leabour request.
Fine, but prior to that, before...
Prior to that, possibly, possibly, but not, not once the Leabour was filed.
Right. Okay. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I guess Councilman Ari Lita Vivekio's objectivity went down the tubes, because every attorney I talked to that has nothing to do with this case thought this was questionable behavior at best, at best. You talk about Colonel Palumbo, he was the mayor's choice, remember that? You voted for him. Now all of a sudden, you're knocking everything he did. Are you saying...
I'm not sure I understand your question.
You said Colonel Palumbo, Colonel Palumbo, Colonel Palumbo was at fault. That was the mayor's choice. The mayor's inaction, not actions, the mayor's inactions caused the Padalano case and the Josephson case. He was offered $90,000, he let it go, he turned his head, now we're getting sued for $5 million. The Josephson case, a first-year law student could figure out that was a violation of one's civil rights, first-year law student. He is ultimately responsible for everything that happens under his watch, period. And Alida, Alida doesn't turn his head or bury his face in the sand, he faces it head-on. Did this mayor face it head-on? No. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I asked him three questions, three questions about various items in this report. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Doesn't that bother you that he didn't know? I'd rather he did know, so at least he could have faced it head-on. He didn't. He turned his head. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll. A yes would be a vote for no confidence.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Vote no confidence passes five to four. Am I correct? We will now take a five-minute break. All right, next on the agenda, a resolution requesting that the mayor reinstate police, Cranston Police Officer Matthew Josephson to the rank of sergeant. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve. Is there any discussion? Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I'll make this brief. When I questioned the mayor at the, when he came before us, we talked about our concerns about how the Josephson matter was handled. He agreed with us that it should be taken care of. He didn't take care of it for a year, I'm letting that go. He said he was going to take care of it. This resolution, again, is just a resolution. But I would hope that everybody on this council, and I know they all have hearts, would make this unanimous vote, because this gentleman was flat-out wronged. We'll leave the negotiation and all that stuff up to the mayor and the union, but this is just a resolve of the council, that what happened was wrong, and urging the mayor to get this fixed as quickly as possible. There's no political motive on this, there's no ulterior motive on this, this is just what I think is right. And I would urge my colleagues to support me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Arquero.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor to this, and also a statement, I think Sergeant Josephson was a victim of a police department running wild and not being under control. I think it's, I want to commend Councilman San Maria for drafting this resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Box.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with the spirit of the resolution, but I think there's a few details that I would like to find out. Number one, if the position is restored, and I guess line 55 says immediately restore. So, if that's the case, let's say a position, is it going to be an acting position? Is it going to be a permanent position by ordinance?
I can kind of answer that, in that it's still under negotiation between the administration and the union. So, I don't know exactly how they're going to, and as you know, we can't negotiate contracts, this is just a resolution. I really would hope that we would leave it up to them to figure out how they're going to do it, but talking to the union and talking to the administration, their intent is to get him restored as soon as possible.
Well, that was my next question, then. Is anyone from the IBPO here that could speak to...
Council President, is it okay if someone from the IBPO speaks?
So anybody from the IBPO, will this, please name an address for the record, please.
Rachel Escobar, represent IBPO 301, 1344 Cranston Street.
I would just like to hear the opinion of the IBPO, because I know there's lists and whatnot, and I just want to hear what the feelings are of the rank and file, I guess.
This obviously was brought to our attention due to the report, and this is new to us. We have sat down with the mayor, and we will. There is some contractual issues with this. It could affect, negatively impact the members in some way, but we have preliminary discussions with the mayor. We think there's a way we could resolve it to help Officer Josephson. However, it has to be agreed with the mayor, that it does not negatively impact our members.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I don't know if immediately restore is a good wording, and maybe it should be changed, I don't know.
How about if we, friendly amendment, take out the root immediately, and as soon as possible?
Or maybe like work with the IBPO to restore the position. I mean, I don't know what the, you know, amendment could be, but it just seems like there has to be more than just unilateral action by the mayor to restore the position. That's, I think that's...
The reason I put immediately, it's been festering for a year now, and I just wanted to get it moving. So, I'm willing, if, to make a friendly, if you want to make a friendly amendment, Councilman, to take out immediately, and I don't think it's going to affect the intent at all.
Let me ponder that for a few. I think Councilman Asido wants to say something anyway.
Councilman Asido.
I would not vote for anything else that doesn't say immediately, and let me tell you why, okay? First of all, the difference is pay, according to my research, is about $100 more a week to move him from single patrolman to where he's at, to sergeant. That's $5,200 a year. That's not going to kill the city. Second of all, I think the IBPO and the mayor are smart enough to know that if they create another sergeant's position, I think the members who are on the promotion list now, this above and beyond what's there, I don't think any of those guys are going to worry about, you know, that he got promoted right away. They might be one patrolman short, and we might have to address that the next budget cycle, but other than that, this guy's been screwed, I can't use another word in the English dictionary, that's probably the best word to use, and he should be reinstated immediately, and that's why. And I think that if you would ask the IBPO, perhaps my calculations were a little off on the pay and whatnot, but I mean, I think that that's a suggestion to them in negotiations too with the mayor, because obviously, we can't do anything again now until the mayor reacts it, and the mayor's going about this, because the report's been out a while, and yet, there really hasn't been any meeting with us and the mayor saying, this is what I'm doing to Josephson, to make him whole, or anything like that, for whatever reason,
Councilman Poplockis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. See, the Colonel's here. I'd like to ask the Colonel what you would do with an extra sergeant, if you have a place to fit him in, how would you make it work?
Well, I actually met with the mayor as well and the IBPO, and that 20th sergeant position, in my estimation, would work well in our prosecution division. We have two inspectors that work in the division now. It's the one detective division that does not have a sergeant in charge of it. It's a very important position, and most departments across the state have a ranking officer in charge of their prosecution divisions.
Thank you.
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of technical issues. Actually, through the chair to the Colonel, if I may, just ask him one, another question, and this is more curiosity. What is your policy on the use of recording devices amongst your office? And this is more curiosity. What is your policy on the use of recording devices amongst your officers?
Before I took over as chief, a policy was instituted that no officer can record another, secretly record another person inside or outside the station. So that policy was put in place after the fact, but before I took over as chief.
Okay, and you continued that policy, obviously.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, one other question, Council President, through the chair, I guess to Mr. Quinlan. The, my only concern about this is that under section, chapter three, section three point one nine, the non-interference and administrative matters section of the charter, do we have any issue with trying to impact something like this?
Okay. I believe because a resolution is merely an expression of the will of the council, I don't think that that could violate that section on non-interference. It's urging the mayor to right what has been perceived as a wrong by members of the council, but I do not believe that that contradicts the non-interference because they're not directing. They have no power to direct them to put Officer Josephson in any position, but merely to recommend and state that it's the will of the council that they remedy the situation by putting him back into sergeant. The mayor doesn't have to do it, they can't force the chief to do it. It is merely an expression of the will of the council and that's the only vehicle they have.
And you don't see any liability issues with, you know, making a statement like that?
I think the liability issues were presented in the state police report. I think this is an attempt to mitigate those liability issues. I don't think that this, any more than the state police report creates a liability issue respectfully.
And through the chair, two, Councilman Botts, did you make that, you make that an amendment to this, or?
I can propose a friendly amendment if you'd like and it would contain the word immediately to satisfy Councilman Sito, but I was thinking of something of, on line fifty-five, after the word, well, it begins fung and then to, immediately begin or continue to conduct negotiations with the appropriate parties to restore and then it would be Officer Matthew Josephson. And I don't know, I'd put that forth as a friendly amendment.
I'll second it.
Council President, could we get that read again for the clerk? I didn't catch it all.
I'd be glad to read it again if you-
The stenographer did not pick up the motion. Could the Councilman please repeat that?
So I'll put it forward, a friendly amendment. On line fifty-five, after the words fung two, it would be immediately begin or continue to conduct negotiations with the appropriate parties to restore and then it would continue Officer Matthew Josephson to the position of sergeant, as it's written in the resolution. Because again, I don't think the mayor can just unilaterally restore Officer Josephson. I think there has to be negotiations with the appropriate parties.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, the amendment's been made and seconded and recorded. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. The amendment passes? Six-three. Okay, on the amended resolution. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. The amended resolution is passed unanimously. All right, let's go. The next resolution is to support the Quantzit Air Museum, sponsored by Councilman Sito and Councilman Botts.
Motion.
Second. Motion made to approve and a second under discussion. Councilman Sito.
Well, this is going to be a really political statement in that a friend of mine, Representative Dorian Costa, who is a representative of North Kingston, called me and asked me to sponsor this and I happen to be, I guess you could call this a hobby, I love museums, military museums and whatnot. I think this place, for what they've done with limited funds, is a great asset to the city of North Kingston and Rhode Island and Quantzit Point because it talks about the history with the CBs and whatnot. I really think it's a good thing and I think with this resolution, perhaps the state could look at that and perhaps hand over some more funding, so that could be a real jewel. Not that it's not one now, but, so I sponsored the resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. Dorian Costa, Rep. Costa also contacted me as well. I didn't realize we had dueling resolutions, but it is a worthwhile resolution. I think the museum also has a lease that's being broken by the Rhode Island Airport Corporation, which is very unfortunate and I think they should reconsider. Again, it's in the rightful place in Quantzit, a lot of history there with the CBs and aviation, so I hope my colleagues would approve this resolution. I know many other cities and towns are voting in favor of this as well, so, thank you.
Councilman Papalakis.
Thank you, Council President Lani. If you don't mind, I'd like to be added as a sponsor of this. I spent many days down there, volunteered down there in the past and helped out and there are a lot of hurdles jumped through, replaced the roof, a lot of maintenance things and this is a jewel of the state and a treasure and it belongs in Quantzit and it needs to stay there, so I support this.
Councilman Stikos.
Yeah, why does the airport corporation want it to move?
Well, they, let me be recognized first, so. Council President, may I speak? I believe it doesn't fit in their plan of what their vision is for that park. I mean, that park has been developed, you know, pretty good. A whole bunch of new companies have come down, Green Core, whatnot, and I think they're going to, you know, it's in such a spot that they want to try to use that space for something else. And I think they've tried to secure land down there in another part of the park and they haven't been successful, so. Rhode Island, the Quantzit, what is it, the Quantzit Point?
QDC, Quantzit Development Corporation.
The museum tried to secure another piece of land?
They're trying to get another piece of land if they don't want to be moved, but it's just that if you look at the plans there, the plans for development and that happens to be in a zone where they want to develop it and make something else there, put something else there as part of a bigger project.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next resolution, a resolution approving the Cranston High School West RFE Commercial Block Six photo, Voltec SOA Panel Project, sponsored by Council, Vice President Santa Maria.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made and second to approve. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution just is required by the grant, grant writer Ken Falowski. It's forwarded to the Commerce Department where we got the grant, so it's just basically a resolution dotting the i's and crossing the t's, so I urge passage.
Any, any discussion concerning this resolution? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion, the resolution approves unanimously. Moving on, Ordinance Committee Chairman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President Lani. We have a resolution calling upon the General Assembly to modify provisions, the law enforcement officers bill of rights to provide transparency, reduce costs for cities and towns, sponsored by Vivekio. I believe there were some amendments, but they didn't pass in committee. Moving this to sent, create a study commission because I think there's some members who'd like to instill some of those amendments in this resolution.
All right, so there's a motion to need a second. A second, need a second on the motion to create a study committee. Councilman Santa Maria.
Through the chair to Minority Leader Arquette, can we just put it in committee and do it there rather than formal commission?
Do you want to send it back to committee?
Here's, here's my issue. I thought when we talked to the minority leader, we liked it, but we wanted to make some, Councilman Stikos wanted to make some amendments. Are the amendments in this, this now, so we haven't really done anything yet? So why can't we recommit and do it in a committee and make the changes there? Forming a study commission?
Well, I know I have some ideas that I'd like to implement also that didn't, weren't part of the committee process, so that's why I was thinking about a study commission. But if you want to recommit back to committee, I don't have a problem with that.
I just don't think we have to form, I think if we just throw it back in committee, we could do it there, but that's up to, that's up to you, however you want to do it. Thank you.
Councilmen-
So, Mr. President, is there a motion on the floor?
I would draw my motion to, for a study commission, if I-
At this point, there's no motion on the floor. You drew his motion, you drew his second. There was no second.
I need, if someone wants to send it back to committee, we're going to need a motion.
Motion, motion.
Motion approved.
How about a motion to recommit?
Motion made to approve and is a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
Through the chair?
Yes.
We need clarification on the motion. Is it to refer to committee?
No. My motion was to approve the-
Motion to approve?
The resolution.
And the second, who was the second?
Councilman Vivekio.
I second.
Councilman Vivekio, thank you.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I believe that it was the will of the committee that we didn't want to get very specific on the changes to the resolution because we don't legislate the Leabour statute. That's up to the General Assembly to do. And Councilman Stikos did propose amendments the night of the committee meeting and they were voted down for that specific reason. So I think it was the will of the committee that we wanted to send something to the General Assembly telling them that Leabour need to be changed, but we leave it up to their will and wisdom to decide what changes need to be made. So if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. My only want, moving this back to committee, was today we received an email from the National Representative for the IBPO and I would just like for the IBPO in general to give us their sentiments and statements on the resolution before we pass it. No one was at the meeting when we did approve it. That would be my only rationale for continuing it, to give them the opportunity as a group to speak on it.
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. Well, it's been noticed for two meetings. No one, they were here early. Well, we have a representative from, from local. I don't know if he can speak on their behalf, but, I mean, they've had the opportunity. This is merely a resolution to ask the General Assembly to look at possible changes. I mean, we're screaming about all of the problems that happened within all of the course of the Leabour process and now we want to be timid about sending this up to the General Assembly. I'd be willing to go up to the General Assembly with Councilman Stikos to try to promote the specifics. I mean, I understand what you, where you were heading with that. I think you have some good ideas. I think what would happen if it's too specific is that it's going to get lost in the shuffle up there. I think it would be better for us to actually testify before the General Assembly with some specific suggestions and maybe even meet with Speaker Mattiello beforehand, who's from Cranston. But it seems to me that the IBPO, I mean, they can certainly voice their opinions at the time it gets to the General Assembly. They've got quite a few months to go before it actually gets there.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Now, I, I'm going to use Councilman Botts' term. I agree with the intent. I like the intent of this. I just think this may be too general. You're worried about being too specific. I think it's maybe too general. We would need somebody from the Cranston delegation to floor manage this. I would suggest maybe we meet with whoever's going to floor manage this if it gets, because they're going to have to put in something to change the Leabour. I just think it might be a little too general right now. I think maybe we need to, I don't know, I know you don't want it to be too specific, but I think it's too general. I think we need to meet somewhere in the middle. So I want to, I want to pass this, but I just don't think it has enough teeth. It's not-
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. I actually agree with you, Councilman Vivekio. I think this is a fine resolution. I like the way it's crafted. I would go up to the State House and testify with you and Councilman Stikos. I just want to give the opportunity for the union to say their piece. I know it's been on the docket twice and I respect that opinion, but there's been so much going on in Cranston in the last two months regarding the police. I think they were more concerned with things having to do with police reports and lawsuits. So I'm still going to support you on this, but I just think we should send it back to committee once.
May I respond, Council President?
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you. I'd be happy to, you know, send a letter to them to ask them to participate with us. I don't have a problem with that. I just think, you know, we're talking about, we need to get this moving because this is obviously a problem that's hit us pretty hard and we need to, we need to try to address it. And I think this is just one, one step. I think, I welcome your help with this. I'll go up there with all of, anyone who's willing to and maybe we can get the IBPO to come with us. Obviously, they may have some objections to it, to some of the specifics and that's why I think that we need to come up with our own plan going up to the State House with it.
Councilman Santa Maria.
I'll go up to the State House too and with you guys. My, my issue is, what are we asking them? If you read this, what are we asking them to do? We're not sending it to the delegation. Who's going to, who's going to floor manage it if they put in a bill? We're not specific enough on what we're going to do with this after we vote for it.
Councilman Stikos.
Yeah, Richard, Don was accurate. I proposed a couple of amendments in committee, to be specific. I felt, as you did, that, as you do, that you can't just say it's, it's all messed up. You need to say, here's how you should change it, at least get the discussion going. But that was not the majority opinion in committee. So, but I just wanted to say that his version was accurate. Now, Mike, so what you're proposing is that this resolution pass and then, I, that's the beginning, and then the end is we go to the State House. And is, what's in the middle? Are you talking about trying to put together a specifics in the middle?
Yes, perhaps, and if I may, Council President, maybe a subcommittee, whoever wants to go up there. Maybe we meet, meet with the IBPO, come up with some specifics to testify with because I think what would happen is, if you try to be very specific, we're going to meet, just the way the Ordinance Committee went, it went back and forth and we couldn't get the amendments, you know, you weren't able to get amendments agreed upon here, imagine at the State House. So I think the, my idea would be to formulate some, some points and specifics that we want the General Assembly to consider, but do it for our presentation and maybe we make, you know, a larger effort than we normally do. We usually send resolutions up there and we don't always go testify, but this one is so important, I have no problem with a subcommittee that, you know, actually carries forward with this.
Any other discussion? Can I make my two cents? Mr. Sakosho, when he sent us that letter today, perhaps some interesting points. If you read the letter, he said, everybody's concerned about the cost of the Policeman's Bill of Rights, the Leabour proceedings. And he questions where the costs really occur, do they occur on the administration's side or on the union's side? I think he's indicating to us they are created on the administration's side. When we, anytime we go into hearings concerning Leabour, Policeman's Bill of Rights are all closed to the public and we only hear the administration's side. We never, ever hear the union's side. the union's side. So without hearing both sides of this, maybe we should go back to committee, and we can have some hearings on the actual cost of this, so when we go up to the State House, we will know what we're talking about. I have no problem going up to the State House and pushing for this, but I want to push for the right bill. Not a bill that condemns the union, but a bill that's fair to both sides. Councilman Vivekio?
Council President, I, I, there, the intention is certainly not to blame the union for any of this. The process itself, and, and Councilman Stikos and I agree on the fact that the timeframes and what we, I think what we're, um, suggesting are a bigger problem, not the, I know that there's some confidentiality issues that the policeman would want to keep, and I understand that. I think that they're entitled to that. Um, I just want to speed up the process. There's a hundred and eighty days, the, the officer gets paid, uh, while, you know, while the process is going on. So, um, that's in the state statute already. Um, the process, they never seem to last six months. They seem to last years. So I think it was more the timeframe. I don't think we, it was never my intention, at least, to, to, uh, dig into the, some of the confidentiality issues that, um, that need to be protected. Um, I think certainly we should be advised of certain things in executive session that we're not, but, um, I don't think the administration has even allowed to hear some of that. Uh, so I, that was never my intention. I, 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 I have a strong feeling about confidentiality because of my, my legal training, but, um, that certainly is not the intention of this. I think it's the timeframes and try to speed up the process somehow, the, because of the fact that it takes so long to, to get a panel in, uh, together to hear them, as they have three, but as Councilman Stikos said, it takes, it can take forever, and if one, one isn't, is rejected, and then there's, there's one on each side, and then they pick a, a third person, there's always a, um, you know, it, it just seems like a very cumbersome process. So that, that's the only reason that, uh, that I, that I brought this forward. It has nothing to do with what the union or the administration does. I think, once you're into that system, uh, you lose track of time. That's, that's our, I think that was one of our big things.
Uh, Councilman Sanrea?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'm still not getting my question answered. We passed this resolution hypothetically, what happens to it? Where's it go? Does it go and sit on, on the speaker's or, on his desk? Who is gonna lead the charge up at the State House? It can't be any of us, it has to be somebody. Who in the Cranston delegation is gonna lead the charge? Have we spoke to anybody in the Cranston delegation? Are they willing to put in, none of these things are being answered. Forming a subcommittee or anything like that? We still have to figure out who we're gonna give this to. Is Josh Miller gonna do it on the Senate end? Hannah Gallo? We don't, there's nothing in here that says what happens to this resolution. We want something to happen, but we're not doing part two yet. We need to, to put down, to go into the Cranston delegation, and we probably need to contact someone from the Cranston delegation to find out who's gonna do it. Or it's just gonna sit there. I've worked there, I know.
Uh, Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. Well, how are we gonna get it there? That's the question. Um, if we don't pass a resolution and we don't form a subcommittee, it'll never get anywhere. Um, the, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to move it forward. Um, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but we've already been through, we may argue forever about specifics. I'm just, uh, trying to develop a way to get it there and, and to get it del, we, we've never really had a problem with getting to Speaker Mattiello, um, who lives in Cranston.
Council President?
Yes, good.
Could I ask, um, our attorney to chime in? Pat, Pat knows the ups and downs and sideways of the State House. Um, what's gonna happen to this resolution if it's passed in this form? Is, there's no trigger effect, but what's-
Well, normally in a resolution, we, we, there's a clause that we ask the clerk to promptly convey it to whoever, whether it's the speaker, who, an intended sponsor, so-
That's not in here.
Typically, that's how we do it, and then, you know, once it gets there, I mean, once it's passed by the body, we normally, you, you normally send them to all members of the delegation, and then hopefully one will emerge as a sponsor, one or more.
Okay, so if you want to work on, hopefully, someone will be a sponsor, we could do that. I mean, should we contact one of them and, and find out if they're willing to take this on? Just don't want it-
And I, I want this to get up there, I just don't want it to sit there. I mean-
Neither, nor do I.
So that's why I'm trying to help you have it not sit there.
Uh, Councilman Stikos and Councilman Botts?
Well, I would suggest there, I can think of at least two ways we could do this. We could either send the resolution back to the ordinance committee and work on the details, or we could pass the general resolution and put on the agenda of the next ordinance committee a discussion of the details and invite, um-
We have time, because they're not until January anyway.
Thank you, Council President. I mean, I don't know, I could be wrong, but in the three years I've been in here, I, I don't recall this much concern about who was gonna spearhead a resolution through the General Assembly, but I'd be willing to, um, withdraw my motion, um, if it's the will of the council to recommit it to ordinance.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. If we want to send it back to ordinance and try to get the, I, I don't know what you're gonna do, but try to get the speaker involved in it early? Is that, I don't know what the intention is and, uh-
You can tell me. Councilman Stikos?
Well, I, I would suggest that if it goes back to committee, that, um, you and I'll certainly have some suggestions about it, that we, we try to focus in on, on, uh, some points. I know you're, uh, talking about the delays, the timeframes, and that then the committee could decide, you know, yeah, we agree with, the timeframe's a problem, but we don't, for instance, I, I think I said at committee, I thought the three-member panel was a problem. Uh, maybe people will decide, no, the three-member panel is not a problem, so that we can focus at least our, our, uh, our complaints with the current law. And then we have those points, and then we decide how we, you know, who we go for a sponsor and, yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Okay. Councilman Vivekio?
Okay, then I, I withdraw my, my motion and move to send it back to committee. Um, and I'd like to invite the speaker, or I think we should get that discussion on early.
Second. All right, motion to send it back to committee with a second, but to also invite the speaker. Any discussion? Councilman Stikos?
I just, I want to go to the point that, um, you made, uh, Council President, um, I think we should get some information. Yeah, no, maybe, maybe we should ask for that now, before the meeting, and frankly, I'm a little nervous about inviting the speaker to our first meeting when we don't honestly have our act together.
Yeah, I, I-
I don't want to waste his time while we're-
I agree with you, and in all fairness, I think we should invite not just the administration, but the IBPO also to give their point of view, what, how they feel concerning the Bill of Rights, and how we can make it less cumbersome and more effective to both sides. Yeah. That sounds, that sounds like a good plan.
Motion to recommit, right? Motion to recommit?
All right.
You mean a motion to recommit?
So that's the motion by Councilman Vivekio, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, and there was a second by Councilman Aketel. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next on the agenda, ordinance is seven dash fifteen dash oh one, ordinance amendment of title ten, code of city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled motor vehicles in traffic, miscellaneous traffic regulations, Woodbury and Parkway, or trailers prohibited. Uh, sponsor, Council Farina, you want to explain this?
Oh, you need a motion. I do. Motion. Motion approved. Second, for discussion?
Uh, yes, I had a couple of constituents call and complain about boat trailer parking on the streets in, on Woodbury Road and Parkway Ave. Uh, one of the streets has a no boat trailer parking sign. I know we discussed in committee the idea of, uh, you know, stopping the right of way for boats. However, um, looking at this, it was a traffic safety issue. Both trails are parking on one side of the street, um, and the issue is, safety vehicles cannot get down the street, hence the need for the ordinance. Um, there are two scripters errors in here. One on line twenty-nine, after the word "on," and then one on line thirty-one, again, after the word "on." So we have to strike both and on both sides, and they're just scripters errors. I urge the council to pass. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
We're having a second.
And a second? Motion made and seconded, under discussion, Councilman Osito.
Just a question.
Councilman Farina and Councilman Stikos, I guess you live in, Councilman Stikos especially, i- is this gonna work, in your opinion, or are they just gonna move the problem in one street to another, and then when other neighbors complaining, you're, "Ward, are we gonna have to address this again?" Or, I mean, what do you think? It's your ward and-
Uh, yeah, that's my suspicion of what would happen, but I, I'm willing to give it a try and wait for the phone calls.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
I get them too, Councilman.
Councilman Sanrea?
Thank you. There's a way around this if you don't make it street-specific, Councilman Farina. That way they can't, they won't move it to another street if you make it-
The fear with that councilman was exactly what Council President Lanny said, then we would be a constitutional violation of locking their easement to water. Um, this is a street that has a specific problem because of the narrowness of it. If they stop parking their boats on streets that are wider or find adequate off-street parking, that's allowed. But again, I'm willing to try this as a solution to help remedy the issue. If it doesn't work, I'm sure Councilmen Stikos and I will get together and bash our heads against the wall and figure out how to stop people from creating public safety issues in Ward one.
I'll support it.
Uh, Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the sponsor, I, um, I don't have a problem with this. I, I, I've, uh, heard from some people about, uh, boat trailers, and there really is no regulation of boat trailers or the size of boat trailers that could be parked even in the, in a driveway, and they've become, uh, an aesthetic issue for a lot of people, even in, in your ward as well. Not in your ward? People in Ward six don't have boats or trailers? Well, we're, we're not as wealthy as the Ward four people, so we don't have as many, we don't have as many boats. I think, I don't think they fit in our, our driveways, but, um, I, there are some problems. I don't, you know, that's something to consider in the, in the future, maybe, to expand this.
Oddly, to, to retort, um, I did get some phone calls from concerned residents who thought this was limiting boat trailer parking in their homes, um, which brought up two differing factors, people who wanted me to get an ordinance on the books that actually stopped people from parking boats in the driveway, and people who were vehemently against us drafting an ordinance not parking boats in the driveway. So I think to your, your point, it's, we're gonna have, we can look at that, but we'll have to be very cautious as to how we do it in certain streets. I mean, if a guy's got a three at a parcel of land, he wants to park a boat, okay, but I don't know how you then manage it. That was the thing that came up, so, we were thinking about it, but-
All right. Councilman Sanrea? Did you hear any? No, no, sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, seven dash fifteen dash oh two, ordinance amendment title ten, chapter thirteen of the code of city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled motor vehicles in traffic, Princess Ave, Farmington Ave, four-way stop sign. Um, this has been recommended by the neighbors. There was a four-way stop sign, but in the recent, um, past, the administration took down one, uh, I guess two of the four stop signs, because it wasn't an ordinance on the books, just, just to correct that, so they can, um, uh, reconfigure the stop signs there.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Repeat me to the point. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next item, um, I would like this letter from Mr. Murphy to be entered to the record, and I think former Councilman Fogarty spoke on this, so I'm gonna withdraw this, um, five-way stop, needs to be a further study by the traffic engineer.
All right, is that a form of motion?
Uh, I can withdraw it, because you don't get a motion.
Oh, you withdraw it, okay.
Okay, next, seven dash fifteen dash oh six, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, point oh four, point oh three oh, code of city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning, zoning flood plain definitions two fifteen.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion made and seconded, to approve. Any discussion? Uh, let's hear from Mr. LaPaula first, then we can cross-examine him.
Okay, this is, very quickly, this is the one with definitions, and there's a parallel ordinance on the, actually on the floodplain regulations. Two thou, and October second, two thousand and fifteen, FEMA will be issuing new floodplain maps that cover the city. It covers the whole state, not for us, it covers the city. A requirement of the FEMA and a requirement for continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program is that we, we basically, we adopt the flood insurance program, or the flood ordinances reflecting the updates. And whenever we do that, it's an opportunity to revisit the floodplain ordinance and make corrections. Uh, we did that, this is our good time doing this, in fact. Uh, the definitions, the changes in the definitions is this time FEMA came back and suggested that we use in our floodplain ordinances, the definitions is provided in the legislation establishing FEMA. So what we did, I did, is strip out the definitions that were sort of our definitions and resubstituted FEMA's definitions for the definitions, both in the definition section and the floodplain ordinance. That's a very quick explanation. The definitions, definitions that you see are the definitions that FEMA suggested we use, and who am I to question FEMA? So, keep them happy.
Any questions?
Thank you for using the word definitions as many times as you could in that statement.
Yeah. Councilman Sanrea?
Uh, thank you. I bet you know a question I'm gonna ask. Fletcher Avenue, is this, is that, uh, in, in here?
Uh, we, when you do, when you adopt the maps, the maps are within the floodplain ordinance, portions of Fletcher Avenue during the floodplain ordinance.
When we talked about this, we were gonna put up the wall and all that stuff, all the pipe dreams we had.
That's good.
It had been mentioned to us that you may make that area a floodplain.
It is already a floodplain, has been a floodplain for a long time, it continues to be a floodplain. It's, uh, it's what's shown on the map.
Okay, so that would lead me to believe that no future construction would be on that, on that property?
No. What the ordinance says and has said since you first adopted it in the seventies, is that, well, we're more strict now. What the ordinance says now is that if you're in the floodway, which is the restrictive portion of the floodplain, you can't build. If you are in the floodplain, you can build, but you have to build to certain performance standards. It's protection, it's, it's basically elevating above the floodplain, it's providing for compensatory storage, it's, it's a whole bunch of standards, but you can't outright prohibit building in the floodplain in general because it's a taking issue.
Right, go back up just a little bit. You said above the floodplain. That dips down into a, into a sink.
There are two parts to the floodplain. One part's called the flood, there are many parts, but in the hundred-year floodplain, there's a portion called the floodways. What I tell everybody, it's where the current goes, it's where the houses wash away. Our ordinance, which is not required by FEMA oddly enough, but our ordinance says you can't build in that. So if there's no house there now, you can't put a house there. And then there's the remainder of the floodplain, where the water goes in a hundred-year event. There's, you can build, but you have to meet performance standards. If you said no in the whole floodplain, it becomes a taking issue. We wouldn't wind up buying all that land. So most ordinances, our ordinance included, has been since seventy-two, is in the two ordinances that I did, is you can build in the hundred-year floodplain, but you have to meet certain performance standards. And I can go through them all, but basically...
No, that's good. Thank you.
I don't want to do that.
Councilman Farina?
Thank you, Council President. Not that I don't enjoy the conversations between the Director and Council Vice President Santa Maria on flood, but as an idea on procedure to either the Chair of the Ordinance Committee or the City Clerk, I don't remember going over these in ordinance committee.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, was that directed to the City Clerk?
I mean, I don't...
If I may?
You may.
When the, these were introduced, we suspended the rule of referring them to committee and advertised the public hearing directly before the full council because there were some timing issues, and having these approved to meet some deadlines with regard to, I guess, the, is it FEMA? The Director can speak to that.
That being said, do we have to suspend the rules to hear these?
No, they were suspended to not, to have the public hearing directly before the council and bypass the committee.
But when? When did we vote to suspend the rules?
When we introduced them at the council meeting.
Is that last month, honey? I just don't remember taking the vote to suspend the rules and hear these, Madam Clerk, that's all.
Hold on one second. Referred directly to the City Council for hearing because of the deadlines, and that was in my conversations with the Director as to when they were going. The other two that were introduced did go to committee and were advertised for committee, but the public hearings were advertised for this evening.
To the parliamentarian, do we have to make a motion to suspend the rules to hear them, even though they...
In abundance of caution for the record, I would do that.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to hear the two flood commission ordinances that are on the docket for this evening.
Second.
All right. Motion been made to suspend the rules, and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
What's the rush?
If I may, the floodplain maps have become effective October 2nd, 2015. In the past, I'll do it in the past, in the past, if FEMA believed you were adopting, they give you time to work through the adoption. FEMA's come back to us and said that if the ordinances are not adopted prior to that date, we're suspended from the flood insurance program. By the time, and this is, I wish I was a free agent on all this, but at the time this went up to FEMA and to FEMA for, now they don't approve them beforehand, they give an indication as to this is, they would accept these. By the time I got them back for review, there wasn't time on the August, which is when we, the August to advertise it for the ordinance committee. We wanted to get it in, in pass, in August, in case there was a problem that gives us September to correct it. If we hear this in September and there's a problem, that we can't pass these for whatever reason, then we lose our, we lose participation in the flood insurance program. So it's just a timing issue. I'd rather have that month, this month, to hear it this month. If you pass it, it's passed. If there's a technical difficulty and it can't be passed, at least it gives me a month to correct it. If we wait until September, and that was the thinking at the time, if we wait until September and there's a problem, it doesn't get passed, we're out of the flood insurance program, and there'll be an awful lot of unhappy people, which I can't blame, so...
And you're saying that this first ordinance, all that it does is take definitions out of FEMA, FEMA definitions, and put them into Cranston ordinance?
Yes.
That's all it does?
Yes. There were definitions in, we took them out, we put the, at FEMA's suggestion, put their definitions in for the same definition.
Any other questions for Mr. LaPaula?
Motion to suspend.
Hearing, none. Any...
Motion to suspend the rules.
This is to suspend the rules. Clerk, please take the vote to suspend the rules. Yes would be our...
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Councilman Akero.
Good, Council President. Mr. LaPaula, if the deadlines in September, why is the council seeing this for the first time October 24th? I mean, it's like the 11th hour. What was the delay? Why couldn't we see this in April or May or June?
Again, when these are drafted, I actually started drafting these in January, believe it or not, is you send the drafts up to Rhode Island Emergency Management, FEMA for review to make sure that there are no flaws. By the time I got them back from, because there are other bureaucracies from FEMA and FEMA was in July or August.
When did you get them back? You have the, you don't have the date?
I don't have the date in front of me. But by the time I got them back, they were ready for submission in, I believe, I moved them as quickly as possible.
Could you email me the date when you got the copy from FEMA? Can you do that for me?
We sent them back, I've been, I was pushing them, I can...
It's a yes or no. Can you email me the date when you find out the date? It's a yes or no answer.
I can give you the date, I can get a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Basically, you're blaming the delay on FEMA, you're saying FEMA held you up, and you didn't get this, the definitions back until mid-July. Is that correct?
It is. We sent them for review, I waited for clearance from them, I had a number of conversations with them, they finally said, "Move it," I moved it. I didn't get it in writing, but I had...
Okay, my next question, being a bureaucrat that I am and being in the General Assembly, does FEMA have an application for extension of deadlines? Do you know?
No, I was told no.
Even though they delayed in giving you the report, you couldn't use that as an excuse?
I was told that it had to pass by October 2nd, and if it didn't pass by October 2nd, we would be suspended until such time.
Mr. LaPaula, I've been in government for many years, and I know there's an extension for everything, okay? So I find that hard to believe, and I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Do we need a motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made to approve, and there's a second. Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Next on the agenda is seven dash fifteen dash oh seven ordinance amendment of Chapter 17, point sixteen, Title 17, Code City Cranston, 2005, entitled Zoning, Special Flood Hazard Districts, 2015.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
What's this about?
Once again, what the requirements for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program is, that you have a locally adopted regulatory scheme to regulate development in the floodplain. We have had one since 1972, when we got our first maps. Is, the requirement is, when you have new maps, new maps are issued, you readopt the ordinance, at a minimum to rereflect the maps. And we did that in 2009, we did that in 2000, I think it was in 2013. We're again doing it in 2015 because they issue new maps. So it's basically stripping out the existing ordinance, because it's easier to take out evidence than just change specific sections, and restating the floodplain ordinance. This ordinance is basically the same that you've seen in 2009, 2013. It's basically the same ordinance, the only changes are, well, not the only changes, the significant changes are, the changes to definitions, the changes to reflect the current map, and then...
The changes to reflect the current?
Maps, the maps as will be existing in October 2nd, 2013. Changes that, when we did it in 2013, FEMA suggested some language as to the level of flood protection that added some ambiguity as to how high we had to protect, how much we had to protect new and substantially improved houses. So I worked out with FEMA and proved the language to make sure that's clear, and FEMA has asked it, and we did that, to add some additional regulations to our coastal A zones, and part of the coastal A zones is an area called the limited limbo, limited areas of limited wave action, and that's what the major changes are. It's basically the same ordinance, it's just those changes, not only those changes, because I changed language, bits of language, those are the significant changes.
Councilman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. So if I had a house in a special flood hazard district, do the changes in the definitions are the changes to the map, is there a chance that my insurance could go up?
No, the insurance, this gets into a much more philosophical, but the insurance is what the insurance companies say they are, or what FEMA says they are. So it depends on where your house is, how high it is elevated out of the floodplain, because we, your first livable floor. They set the rates, this ordinance wouldn't necessarily affect the rates, except that for new houses, we require, and that's also building codes, so I'm not doing anything exceptional, that all new houses be, the first floor be elevated one foot above, which would definitely affect how your insurance comes. This ordinance, because it's much more detailed than the minimal ordinances, if we participate in a program called Community Rating System, we'll gain its points on Community Rating System, which means we can get a discount citywide. And I just haven't had time to do the Community Rating System. That's where we get more.
So for existing housing, we're pretty safe in the fact that people shouldn't see any kind of increase in their...
Well, if the increase comes, it's not because of the ordinance.
Okay.
Comes because there's general increase in flood insurance.
Okay.
It has no effect on this.
Because my concern is, we're suspending the rules, we're seeing this for the first time, and then if there was a result, you know, someone's, I guess flood insurance went up, the only thing we could say to them is blame FEMA, because they railroaded this through. So, that was my concern. But it seems like what you're saying is it would affect new structures, because you have to build it at a certain height, and that existing structures, it would only be from their insurance providers due to other forces.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? To be known, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
And a second?
I believe so.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Motion to un-suspend the minute. Do we have to un-suspend the rules?
We have suspended the rules already, we don't have to suspend them.
Through the chair, apparently the motion to suspend was for both ordinances.
So we don't have to un-suspend, okay.
No, no, they were for both of them, so we were covered on the second one.
No, thank you. I think we have to, let's suspend the rules now. Stay there.
Maria.
Go ahead and do it.
Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, Finance Committee.
And what about the second?
We have a very dull lineup here. We have the resolution authorizing the real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next is the resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 And lastly, we have the approval of tax interest waivers recommended by the City Treasurer.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Safety Services.
Next on the agenda, Safety Services Committee, Councilman Farina, I believe, you chaired that committee.
I did, Council President, thank you. The only thing on the docket tonight is the appeal for the denial of a license for Body Works, license for massage therapy. This was for Sun Massage. It was denied unanimously by the Safety Services and License Committee. The reason for the denial was twofold, based on the recommendation of the Police Department in reviewing the applicant, application. She was the only person to come before us for a massage parlor that had 24 rooms, due to the size and the fact that she was the only person under our new Body Works license ordinance. All employees are to come before us for approval with licensing from the state. She admitted that she had workers working for her, and there were no additional people with her for approval. For those two reasons, we deny the application unanimously.
Is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here? Did they all get licenses in the last couple of weeks, or is that what the appeal's for?
The appeal is to appeal Ms. Sun's denial.
Do we want them to come forward and testify that...
Does anybody want to come forward and testify on your behalf, why you should get a license?
She has a license.
She has a license. So, Clerk, do they have a license?
What kind of license?
I think there's some communication issues. She does not have a license from the City of Cranston. What she does have with the application is, she's a licensed or certified therapist with the State Health Department, not the city.
Councilman Sanrea, you have a question?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, to Vice Chair Farina. Do you remember what the vote was on this?
Unanimous.
Against applicant.
Unanimous to deny.
She has a license for Rhode Island.
All right, you have a Rhode Island massage therapist license.
Come forward to the microphone, so we can hear.
Do you have a Cranston?
It's here, yeah.
What's the name and address?
My name is Yang Guzhao, I'm helping her to translate, and this is Ms. Li Sun, she's the owner of the shop, and she holds a Rhode Island's license.
All right, but she does not have a Cranston license, am I correct?
No.
City of Cranston, licensed operator.
No, this is the one. No, this is the one. No, this is the one.
And you're going to give it up?
But the Rhode Island license can be used for Cranston, right? Cranston is part of the Rhode Island.
No.
No.
You need two licenses. You need one for the city, and one from the state. You have, you're halfway there. You haven't got the Cranston license.
But when I go to the city hall, nobody asks me to have a license for Cranston, so I took over a shop from the ex-owner, and she has been operating a massage salon for three years, and she didn't tell me anything about that.
And she was operating without a license, if that's the case. What's the address there?
Ninety-six Rolfe Square, Square.
Square, ninety-six Rolfe Square. City Clerk, can you, any comments on this?
I have no comments. Is there any specific information that you're looking for from the file?
All right, Councilman Farina.
Council President, this was the establishment that was operating in the city without a city license that the police went and shut down. She then came before us at the last Safety Services Committee. Truth be told, it was on the Safety Services and Licensing Committee in June. The applicant did not appear, opened the business, began giving massages without a city license. The police then went in and shut her down. She then came before us in July, applied for a Cranston license, which we denied based on the recommendation of the Police Department and the answers to the questions that were asked by the committee.
Okay.
Councilman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. It should also be noted that the reason Cranston Police went there was because there was an advertisement on Backpage.com. As we all know, that website is usually not used for legitimate businesses that are offering massage therapy. They're usually offering something else that's not legit. So, I think, given the fact that Ms. Sun came before the council, didn't come before the council in June, operated her business without a license in July, and given the fact that her means of advertising were of suspect... fact that her means of advertising were suspect, I was very against offering a, any kind of license to the establishment. But she says she has a massage therapy license, and I'm curious, through the chair of the clerk, what kind of license she applied for with the city.
It was, it was originally listed on the agenda because we weren't sure of the nature of the operation, what she was going to be providing, and that would have been addressed at the meeting when she appeared for the license, as to what exactly, what services she was going to be providing, all of that. But again, I think she did indicate at the meeting there were other employees working for her which were not licensed.
Thank you. Mr. Kirshenbaum, you want to come in?
Yes, Council President, there were, there were two issues, two categories of issues. One is that the applicant did not possess a city license. But the second major issue was there were people working there, and I believe this applicant thought that the people working under her were somehow protected, because she had a license, she had a massage license, but the other people didn't. So it was clear through captive comedy that she didn't have the city license herself, although she was properly registered with the state, but everyone who worked there had to be licensed by the state as well. So there's a miscommunication that not only she, if she were the only one working there, and she had a state license, then it might be okay, but there were other individuals working there who were not licensed by the state.
In that case, if I don't use these other people, I will just work there by myself, is that okay? Can I have the license?
She'd have to apply again, and the size of the building would determine, no, I'm not experienced, so I'm not going to comment any further. She'd have to reapply.
Again, start from, from...
Not with the state, with the city.
With the city, but she is applying for license, and that is why you denied last time, no?
She had other employees working for her who were not licensed. Everybody had to have a Rhode Island license who worked there.
So right now, she's not going to employ anyone, she's going to, well, to be herself...
And she still has to apply for a Cranston license.
Okay, okay.
So, Counselman Botts?
I noticed on the docket, it says appeal of denial of license. Is there a vote that needs to be taken on this, or is it...
Yes.
Okay.
Motion made to deny the appeal, and it's a second. Any discussion on the council concerning the denial? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 All right, your appeal's been denied. You have to start over again.
That concludes the Business and Safety Services Committee, Council President.
Thank you. Claims Committee, Councilman Quebecio.
Thank you, Council President. We met and settled nine claims, all very small this time, so happy to report that I think we've gotten rid of all of the winter accidents and mailbox issues and potholes. That's all we have.
Of course, we can prepare for the next round.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, public hearings. Anybody from the public like to speak on any item? Knocking or unknocking? Any subject, except Yankees being ahead of anybody.
Hi, my name's Roland Kuti, I live at 27 Lee Street in Cranston. We talk about the flood issue here, and Mr. Botts asked about insurance. After the second great flood we had, there's like a $900 perk test you have to do before you even get flood insurance, and then they base it on how much in the flood zone you are. Listening to what that gentleman said, it seems like 20 years ago, when I met my wife and know where I live, the houses on that lot should have never been built, because they were in a floodplain, but DEM didn't care, neither did members of the city council. So now there's a house that is supposedly being built, because they took the lot that's there, and they split it in half, again, without any recollection of anyone in the neighborhood, hey, this is what we're going to do. I mean, it's not a Covellin Farms, it's not a Wendy's, but it is a thing that is going to affect the neighborhood, because there is a lot right now that is underwater right now, because DEM made them put a retaining wall to build a house there, and the road was brought up to meet the land, and now that gentleman's kids can't even play in his yacht, because it's underwater at this point. And now the city allows this gentleman to now fill in a lot that's sucking in to bring that lot up, so that now he can build a house at some point, because he doesn't really have any money, he just does this on a whim. So I'd like the city council to, when things like this happen, to investigate what building, that these builders are doing in dead-end streets, and what are they doing in putting houses up for no reason, with no plan or no nothing, on a whim. And that's, that's the problem I have, is that, yeah, my house has been underwater twice in seven years, okay, now two more years, that seven-year plane is coming along. Not too long ago, the city came in, the stream that follows behind my house, I'll give you a perspective, if you take the canyon, just before the canyon, there's like a, actually it's a lake, I didn't even realize it, to the right, that, my house is on that side, and I live in that area. Behind my house, there's a stream that runs, and that stream was dredged by the city. About a month ago, DEM came by with a bunch of people and had them flatten out that land. Every time DEM comes and causes a problem, it causes a problem for me and my neighbors, because it floods. I mean, that's reason, there was a 10-foot berm of dirt on the side of that, and according to DEM's rules, that was a violation. When the owner of that land actually planted that tree all around his land, he got fined, DEM took their money, and then two weeks later, after he paid his fine, they can take that tree out, because that's the way the state law is. I don't know what the city ordinance is on this, but this is something that affects me and affects all my neighbors, because they get four feet of water in their house, not the two feet, not much, not the two to three inches that I get in mine. So when I see this floodplain thing, and I see builders just doing things on dead-end streets, because nobody cares about us on dead-end streets, I mean, the trees still haven't been picked up from the, from the big microburst storm we had, but yet every one, other neighborhood and street has been. So that is my concern as a taxpayer, is that what is the city going to do about these floodplain issues and builders building houses and just doing things without, without any say? And that's my concern.
Yes, Garrett, name and address for the record, just...
Matt Chandler, 139 Smith Street in Edgewood. I had a concern that's been raised to me by a couple of people that live in the city, that there's been a, after the microburst, a lot of us in Cranston were hit hard. What I don't understand is, there was a lot of money, it seemed, spent on contractors coming in to clean it up. And two of my friends now have emailed me or texted me that they were concerned that they saw contractors sitting around for several days, working on their street. And they were concerned that they never actually saw DPW come out and do anything. It was all subcontracted out. So I guess the question I have is, has anybody in the administration at any point reached out to any other cities and towns, especially on this type of storm? This type of storm is very localized, Warwick was hit hard, Cranston was hit hard, other places weren't. Did we reach out to any other cities and towns to say, hey, could you lend us a hand for a week or two, in order to, that we don't spend an ordered amount of money on Northeastern Tree and anyone else?
Thank you. Can anybody from the administration respond to that? No? Give it a shot.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to respond. The city, as far as I know, had one crew from Northeastern Tree that was hired as a contractor to supplement the work of our highway crews that were out on the roads, and we did get a crew from the town of Johnston, the mayor of Johnston graciously offered to allow one of his crews, including a truck and a chipper, to come and help us out in the, in the week following the storm, because we had so much to do in such a short time. Our crews continued to go make the rounds around the city, and certainly, if Mr. Kuti wants to let us know his address, we'll make sure we get somebody by there as quickly as we can.
Is there any question?
Mostly, I'd be curious to see if there's actually a bill that's going to come out for the contractor that we paid, that we only had one crew out for, and then to see if they matched up, but that's, I guess, next month.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? Any questions? Hearing none, public hearing now is closed. Election of city offices. Cranston Historical Cemetery's Commission. Walter A. Slocum, member, council appointee. I appointed Mr. Slocum, he has an extensive resume, and I feel he'd do a very good job. No. Our reporter of city offices, standing monthly report of cited properties in the Councilman Botts, do we have that?
We do. Good. Word two was in the lead this time.
All right. Any other discussion concerning that? Hearing none, we'll move on to executive communications, report on hiring a special counsel. Is there any report from the administration concerning that? Hearing none, how about the Cranston Fire Department? Deputy chief?
Deputy Chief Peter Fornier has requested that his name be placed on the pension roll effective September 4th, 2015, at the end of his shift. He reports that he has served the Cranston Fire Department since his appointment in I have confirmed with Chief McKenna that, in fact, Deputy Chief Fornier has served honorably since 1985, and would recommend that the council approve his city pension effective September 4th, at the end of his shift.
Is there a motion? Motion approved. Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, councilman?
Director, is he retiring from the state pension or the city pension?
City pension, councilman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
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 Mr. President? Excuse me, Lieutenant David Records of the Cranston Fire Department, in compliance with the department pension ordinance, and anticipating his 56th birthday, requests to be continuing in service for one year. The administration received documentation indicating that he is eligible, and I would recommend approval of this request.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Claims settled by the solicitor, Michael Fantasia and Robert Levine and Associates, $8,197.23 for personal injury. Councilman Stikos.
Yes, could we just be told what the nature of the personal injury was, a slip and fall, or...
Counselor, I'm not exactly sure. I'm going to have to get that information from Mr. Ross, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our council president communications, I'll be very brief this evening. This evening, we took a very important vote, vote of no confidence. It was a hard decision, we all discerned our consciences before we made that decision. I think, as a council, we sent a clear message, and I think we did the right ethical and moral thing by doing it. A vote of no confidence is just a symbolic vote, doesn't require the mayor to do anything. We didn't ask for his resignation, we just sent him a message on how we felt as a council. And I think on occasion, especially mayors and administrators, in all honesty, they get to feel that they're a little above everybody else, and they can do what they please. And occasionally, we have to send them a message. That's part of our job as a legislative body of this city. And for those who voted yes, thank you. Moving on to council communications. Councilman Stikos.
Yes, can, do we have any new news on the 176 Patuxent Avenue? This is a scaffolding that's been up for years.
He is still in the process of doing repairs to his home.
He is still in the process of doing it. I didn't hear the last part.
Repairs to his home.
To repairs to his home. Okay, I'd like that on the, stay on the agenda, please, because...
Because it's eternal life, councilman.
Yes, that's because the scaffolding never dies.
It could be forever, councilman.
Yes, that's my, that's my point. Very good, thank you. Okay, the next, my next item, the Providence Water hydrant. This has been resolved today by Ken Mason. Like to thank, through Director Barone, like to thank Ken Mason for his work on this. But just so everyone else knows, that this could happen to you. Providence Water is doing this big water main renovation project in Edgewood, and they decided that a hydrant needed to be placed at the end of Bow Street, which is a dead-end street that leads to Fay Field. And they, there's no question, apparently, no one's questioned whether the hydrant is needed, but they didn't inform the property owner, and, so they just stuck the hydrant in a rather prominent place in her lawn, and then they installed it pretty poorly, so that it was stuck up in the air, rather than flush to the ground. So my point of bringing this up is that, at some point, I imagine, they're going to move to other areas of the city, and they don't, while they do a very good job notifying residents, here's what's going to happen with your water, they didn't talk to this person at all about where to put the hydrant. What Director Mason worked out was to move the hydrant to where the property owner wanted it, and to make it flush with the ground, but that was very painful, I think, for everyone involved to get that done. And it seems like Providence Water, if they're going to do something on your property, even though it's in a city easement, that they should tell you, here's what we plan to do, and then you'd have an opportunity to make suggestions beforehand. Just want to let everybody know about that. All right, and the last, the last thing was, I asked for a report on all private investigators hired by the police department since 2009, and Director Strom supplied, I think you sent a, an email to me saying, or maybe it was to everyone, saying, there's only one...
Yes. The councilman, when I did my research, I, and I believe, I think you should have got a copy of the invoice today.
Yes.
Okay. There was only one for $1,550 for Brownstone. It's called Brownstone Partners LLC, and that was done, charged to Consulting Services back in October of '13, and that had to do with surveillance of Sergeant Josephson. In addition, I don't know if...